They didn't watch it.
Never did watch it?
Yeah, but they watched it. I kept on going across the field.
Okay.
I put in all the lifts and that, never got around to watching it.
How long you want to keep it?
Well, I think he thought I was latching on to it.
No, no, no.
Forever or something like that.
No, no, no.
He don't mind. You know, summer of all, I gotta have a good day where I can sit down, spend a couple hours and watch it.
No, I know you're not that tired.
I knew it was a man, I said, and I had it.
Was that a shame getting your head taken off?
That one over there?
We're like, we're not awake.
Yeah, no, I'm not even waking now.
I'm like, we're probably stupid. We may not have thought that would see what happens. Because it doesn't usually do that.
That was a good one.
He's just a good little gay cow, right?
Yeah.
There she comes.
I don't think I've seen her before.
But you always got to see.
You could let it out? I wouldn't, bro. She's always moving.
And she's like, boy.
You got some things to say?
You got a thing with me, first, this is a call.
Well, what you guys got on? I don't know, so I don't pay you.
Pretty good, but she...
It go that way, a lot of the one or four blocks, I took something about, because if you get that site or if it come down there. Yeah.
I thought I just tried it all.
Oh, she was eating everything.
That means y'all gonna talk extra loud.
We can do that.
If Kelly makes me hear the statement, I'll give her a look, she knows how all this is about.
It's 5:30 right before here, we'll go ahead and start a special poll made in public hearing this evening. The tangents of the abandoned of Second Avenue started from Tyler, Second Avenue and heading to South to the railroad track. I'll pass this map around, it come from the tax association office. And if y'all not familiar, it's the straight west of Mr. and Mrs. Roy Rose, Second Street. Y'all look at that, pass it up down, I'll line that up to Second, Second one up there, Second Street.
Yeah.
Second Street, if you look at that, pass it up down. And, uh... What they're... I walked with Mr. Roy down there, down there to pass the, I don't remember people's names, Red Bear House. There's a Red Bear House down there, very close to the curb. And that's where the, uh... Who put the barricade up, is that right, Mr. Roy? Okay. So y'all look that over. Uh, I think they're still in jail, I haven't heard anything wrong.
They are.
Yeah. So I don't know if, uh... I don't know what's going on with them, but, uh... This is an open meeting for discussion, landing Second Avenue. So it's open for discussion, both public and the board here.
Okay, now, we got, uh...
Just sort of for the time of, right?
Yeah.
Y'all, then if we got Roy Rose lives right here, around there, 1728. Uh, he got that whole particular section there, right?
Yes, sir.
The one about on the other side of the street.
We've... I've talked to the people, and they're...
They been wanting down.
They wanted down.
Especially the ones live down there at the end by the railroad.
Now, just, just which is the area, the whole of Dallas, is this road right here?
Yeah, this road right here.
What's up with doing these things over here?
They'll be able to get in and out, 'cause that road, and I don't know how many fo- how many feet off of Tyler, back there to where that curb, that it turns and goes, uh, out to 389, and that right next to it. And that's where it complete, so nobody will be abandoned from getting in and out. That's just, that's added weight, really, what that is, well, it's street, Second Street. But it'll be closed down where there won't be, uh, nighttime traffic running through there, uh, disturbing, uh, the folks who live on Second Avenue.
It's, it's not gonna...
But you're gonna have it blocked off, thousands of people on the other side, or...
Okay, it's not gonna close, it's not gonna close the end by on Tyler Street, just to end on the railroad track, to keep four-wheelers, motorcycles.
Oh, with the railroad track?
Right.
This is.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Railroad track, okay. Point McGinn, New Mexico.
So you just want to prepare me just in the end?
Yeah.
No, I think we're closing it down.
No.
No, no.
No, just one end.
We've got this, the board, over on Weaver Street, I think we're going to tear it back down. Uh, Weaver Street, going up to Drew Savins, uh, his barricade's still up there right now.
Why not, uh, just a question, why not put up a sign saying dead end, and then log off that end?
That's what, that's what David's talking about.
You just gonna put something up or wood, it can be glued, and we got a wood that's like...
That's what you're talking about, David.
Well, that's all we got up there right now, Weaver Street, they, somebody could run through that if they wanted to. I'm not gonna put something up there, iron, that, uh, that they could run in.
But I think, I think the property, the sign up there saying dead end street.
Definitely will be a sign, but, uh, also...
Yeah, just like the one from the projects. Al, they know, like, they used to go through the projects, and all that, right?
I don't know, I don't know about that.
Because abandoning it would be...
You go split halfway in between each property, you know?
And that's illegal.
So, the people that live on that road now, are they gonna take care of maintaining that area, that road?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's not...
Always been taking care of it.
Yeah. I used to.
Well, it's pretty much like one of them, but, but the church, I would tell, I don't know what's going on there, but, um, you know, quite a lot of things.
Well, they very seldom there, evidently that guy works off somewhere, he's very seldom there, they may be there two or three days a, a month, and, uh...
This street has been abandoned a long time ago.
I thought Charles Hudson did something that whole time ago. Did you get that package from Mr. Al?
Yes, I did. Yes, I did, in fact, I would remember, 'cause I was there, the kids was on the way, and, but...
And they've already, they've abandoned.
The First Street, though, but the Second Street was more bad.
Right.
So they didn't abandon it.
But the Jacksons had some land where the, 'cause the brick house is, and it was a dog pound at that time, and so they changed their mind, because these L and E land had a little dog, dog pound there. And so they decided not to, but First Street, we own land on both sides. And so they abandoned it, and we own that, and plus that, uh, uh, land between, on the back of our land. We own land on both sides of that, so they abandoned that too, so...
We have it.
But we don't wanna own this, we just wanna close it.
You really don't want it abandoned, you just wanna, well, it's...
Close it to keep people and kids from, yeah, four-wheeler back and forth and every... They come down the railroad track from 389, come through there just flying, and just around and round and round, and it's just...
What about getting into Gayling's house?
Yeah, no, we're not gonna abandon the road. Oh, he's for it, oh, he said he's been wanting down.
Who's that?
The, her husband, her boyfriend.
Yeah, but I mean, I just, if you ban it, it's, you know, probably on both sides, it'll get closed, yeah.
Yeah, it's just gonna be closed, it's not gonna be abandoned, it's just gonna close, we can still come in there.
They're gonna block off one end.
Yeah, one end, we're not gonna block off Tyler.
Now you got three blocks.
Yeah, no, we're not, we're not, yeah, we're not asking it to be blocked off at Tyler Street, at the railroads where we want it blocked off.
Oh, that should be blocked off.
Exactly, and that's, we've already talked again, and they, they in agreement, he said that they've been on that zone for years. And I said, let's do something about it.
So you know, one that, and then they were, uh... Harn across that.
Uh-huh.
It is...
That's when Harold Jeans and them had that gravel pit thing back there in the back. But right now, there, it's a lot of drugs going on back there.
Oh, I know, that's, that's...
Oh, it's been going on back there, and I thought, see, that blocked off too.
I could, I could close stop to that, nobody'd vote for me. That's the reason they did that down about the house, project, try to... What do you mean, it's gonna be... Easy case.
There's the Texas.
Mm-hmm. Uh, that's what they're doing back there.
He must've been over, Manz went to, he's going to Texas.
Oh, he went to Texas, I don't know, uh...
Maybe I said it, they posted to his kids.
Yeah.
I wonder, I knew his house was a saver a while, and changed, changed hands a while, and went back and sold it, so...
He's had a lot of hair, come from, uh, the street path here. Pretty much, yeah.
Mr. Herd getting banned from slots?
He bought, he was, he was trying to win, he was about to rest.
Why?
He's sick, and he's...
I don't know. He lost over there, probably, this afternoon, he lost sense, but he gets to, I don't know.
He told me yesterday that he's been pretty bad in the state.
Had big feelings. World.
But I think, what, what I understand is that the bait, or no, this is what I was telling, that, that when that, that when the garage on the two lots that you built, from your home, and they are coming off Tyler Street.
So y'all be closing, David, you're gonna be closing that one end, and the city will still take care of Second Street, of, of...
No.
Okay, we're gonna be closing the far end of Second Street, but you're gonna still leave the one end at Tyler open?
Yes.
And the city will still take care of that road?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
In Florida, that's...
Oh, yeah.
There's a little bit of holes, and loads, isn't it, every time it did?
That's up here at Third Street for a lot of news.
Well, I figured, I mean, it's, it's blunt, I think, because abandoned means the city will...
There's no way we will afford it, we own that land there, and we already put that fence in, there ain't no way I can do all that.
They're dangling, they're dangling, you can't get that on, yeah.
They're not gonna do that.
They're gonna paint that arc, you know?
Yeah.
Say, you can hear that arc, Mel, Brown Mel Haleo, right?
I'd get the baby there.
Grace or something like that.
Yeah, two bills, he paid your money, very good. So let's check out a way better.
You'll have to come down there and get your card, so...
Yeah, I have a camera, well, stick it there, I'm going home, we got to, I'm going to work.
This is what you missed. Instead of abandoning, you're gonna want to close that.
I think we're in hospital.
No, I did not, I take a look at that.
Yeah, I...
I did say that, all the church, I'm married, and...
I wish I had that, 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 that.
And you have problems.
I believe most. We're gonna go...
At the tracks like that.
A bad, a bad, we can get away with that.
I mean, I might go back on...
We got something going.
I am, let's... I had more, I was...
You could, uh, you could be a church, or, or, or... Small kids go out there together, that's funny, they got a big joke and everything. What you wanna do? What you wanna do, very? I did tell them up there, what, uh, park?
Sounds like you like, you like him a lot.
What you got, a hood bar thing? Yeah, well, that's all, they cut you a bar, that, that, drive, play slow up there. We got another man gonna work on that. We got another man gonna work here, too, we're on crazy.
Yeah. I personally like that.
He's not gonna charge us.
Well, that's why I love the city, because they're prepared.
You want to get, you want to, anybody here?
That's what I, I've got to tell you, this guy...
Well, if you don't charge us, we'll be enjoying, I don't want it.
What you doing, E.D.? Start counting your money.
Trying to stay hidden from Carol. She keeps me busy up there.
You had to cut it up in a little while, let her know who the boss.
I seen him back there once while beeping around the tree.
Your health doing good? Your health doing good?
Yeah, I'm doing alright.
You got this on?
Definitely.
She thought she did.
She thought she did.
You just left it on her own?
A lot of people go back, I got a new D. Good, you know, I'm ready to move. They don't bother me, this is my fee.
Oh, it didn't help. I got nice.
It's recording.
But you know.
Ooh, that I'm not playing this with.
Hey, Karen. From the land, the land that y'all live on with, with, with actually, with actually some kind of friends of ours, managing lava. Are y'all getting any relation to this? I, I just think so. I don't, I just think that is, I didn't really.
Yeah, Ford don't have any roses here.
Just a chair after?
Yeah.
No, I'm just interested. I don't think, yeah, that's it.
Okay, so when it comes in. Stanford was free.
Well, I knew what they was gonna do. I knew it was gonna be.
He doing it for Mr. Adams for his book here.
We gonna do it together.
He said, "Well," and he didn't, and he, "Thank y'all," saying, "Yes, dear." "Wherever you want, are you happy?"
That's right.
I bet you that. I bet they make it there. Yeah, they, that's what's more, yeah.
That's the best way.
The only thing she said if you messed it up.
Yeah, if you wanna eat. Yeah, it's my fault.
But now she had a multi-thing, so. And it was raining, well, actually it was raining, then it was less, and now so it's got to somebody to take care of it. If you say break it, you gonna be good for laundry for the day.
Do you send a Ford?
I gotta go through it, sorry, can we come over? But didn't you dress up today as my injured person?
I was injured, but I didn't dress up because mine's in my hand. But I tell you what, I've never seen somebody out of a contract who won't please. The fifth grade must have had eight sets of crutches.
They need on the lookout.
We even had a wheelchair and a scooter showing.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah.
I'm surprised they allowed them.
My mom, did you send a dress up today? So, son, we had at least eight sets of crutches just in the, in the fifth grade.
She had two because I'm her last patient, I worry about these crutches, and she was stretching today.
Yeah.
He called, Abby called, and some people called him, like, "It's not that serious." And she's like, "I'm gonna bring your arms, like, when I sit on your arms." I see it, you already accident from, like, I'm gonna put my boot on, I see it, just put your boot on.
Yeah. I asked, I asked, um, Bridget Brown from the room, I said, "Hey, now, where's your crutches?" Uh-huh, I spent twelve weeks on those things. I'm not fitting those things back out.
Like, I put my boot on.
Today was fake and injury day.
Yeah.
And I mean, everybody.
She didn't need to make it yours, she could have done this one.
Uh-huh, I didn't get to see her this morning. Well, you know, us was telling Beverly, we had a scooter there, we had a wheelchair there. I mean, those kids went all out.
Had that thing that, she was like on one leg, with her wheelchair.
Yeah.
Cause I forgot about it, you know, taking it against the bathroom.
I didn't get a chance to hear Mr. Lowe's reaction on, on the injuries.
Tomorrow's what, back Tuesday?
Yeah, tomorrow's Monte Grove. And then Wednesday is where Pinka Red, and then Thursday's Marine Madness.
He just told me to watch this.
Okay, we have five minutes left. I'm ready to hear it. There's a famous last one for everybody in the south. Hey, y'all want this? Only has the table.
Yes, they have.
Right now, by the hour, I just thought that was strong.
They ripped their car just great. Two, we're gonna back into the kitchen, let it cool.
Yeah, the only time they give a little bit of thought is that we.
Make another pot.
Oh, I don't need it.
I know, I asked the mama about that one.
Yeah, it's all my fault, it's always all my fault.
I ain't much, well.
Matt, did you get the picture?
No.
Thank you, got everything you need?
I hope so. We're not gonna find out. I've never seen anything before. We go to this apple.
No, you go to that root, right?
Uh, hey, Lake Charles.
Oh, what, Lake Charles? Lake Charles and Baton Rouge?
I have one question. They actually, we put a main in a street, they actually just want the internet closed off. So, do we need to reprogram it, or can we just say?
Have the ordinance with me?
Well, we just, we didn't actually assign them a number. Can we just, when they get ready to go, say instead of landing in it, we're just going to get in it?
You get a lesser, uh, to this, to this name?
Yes, that changes.
I say the wording.
Well, I hope that we're supposed to know that they can use my trip. Yeah. Keep doing what you're doing. Yeah, uh, yeah, yeah, keep the people from making that trouble. Well, it pulled it there before it was in the pool.
There you go.
That's what I did. I backed it in, turned it around a bit, that's the traction on the bike up in there. They can't see that group or in the back.
It probably doesn't seem white for me. I don't care.
Which one?
Not really about that. I was standing, I played different things.
When I was working there.
You handle persons, just.
It closes it off.
I got my shirt up, so I'm gonna get it in once. I mean, that's all it's gonna do.
I think it's.
It's a good thing it's clean, and whatever they're cleaning, I'm happy when it's clean. Oh, the fella's just gonna go there and I'll pull up there and we'll agree.
Now, you want me to make some noise? You sure?
You want me to, I'll hurt.
You'll do it?
What the post has.
Put your clothes in it. Close it in the end though.
That way you're covered. Yeah, you ever public, notice everyone that's when we get in seven man over six, or sixty one, it's one for the cause.
That's why, that's what I had a thought.
Okay, it's six o'clock. College meeting, our, could you please rise? Yeah, blow down our public hearing, then I'll be back under our old business, but right now, while staying, uh, Mr. Bennett will give our invitation, and the remains standing for the federal elections to our place.
Our heavenly Father, we're so grateful that you're the wonderful God that you are, that you're there to answer our prayers in time of need. Pray that you'll watch over us and let all the aldermen make, uh, uh, the good decisions that will be pleasant to your eye and will be beneficial to the town. Pray that you'll just be with everybody that's here, as well as our town, and the watchovers were safe and wise. We thank for all the blessings that you give us, in Jesus' name we pray.
I pray to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Are there any amendments to the agenda? No amendments to the agenda, okay. Uh, approval of amendments as presented for record meeting on January the twelfth, two thousand fifteen, I have a motion. No second.
No second.
All in favor? I'm not opposed. Approval of financial statement as presented for January two thousand sixteen, I have a motion, what's your name? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Not opposed. Okay, uh, have a few things under various comments, uh. I don't know how many of you take the Boulevard D, I don't even take it myself, but there was an article on the front page, and that was, uh, January the twenty first pertaining to flyovers, jets, and town, the letter had been sent, uh, to Senator David Fetter, certified letter, we haven't heard anything back on it yet. Uh, we'll send one to Arthur Sill, we'll send one to John Smith, and, uh, we don't have any time problem, we'll send them another. Uh, thanks goes out to our local paper for putting this in the papers, uh, about the flyovers. Uh, we have contacted Mr. Ron Smith, he's our representative for Clintco, and Boulevard Lector. Uh, they was in town a couple of weeks ago, I saw their trucks. Uh, the town is charged just as much to these straight lights if they're on or if they're off. Off the Jordan, I'd ask him, and he made a list of those that was on and off, and that list has been turned over about, I guess it was a couple of weeks ago, maybe three, they was in town, and, uh, if there's any that's not working, just let us know, we'll get that to Mr. Ron Smith, and, uh, that, that will be taken care of. Code mix been put out on three hours straight, we're out right now, we're gonna have to get some more, but we're working that away. Legal description on moving our city limits, uh, Mr. Welber, we've been working hard on this, uh, trying to get it all finalized, uh, I think you just told them what goes on the Lake Charles DOT and the Baton Rouge DOT, they'll be the ones to move the city limits sign. North of Maryville, where it's set now, up to Myers Law, on the north side, Myers Law, that constitutes both sides of the road, and we're thinking a couple of houses up there right now, uh, on Gil Street. Uh, nursing, I don't have a potato sale on February the sixth, uh, February the twenty sixth, it's six dollars. Got a telephone number here, we got there on the bulletin board, it's, uh, Joy Maryville Rehabilitation Center for their annual loaded baked potato sale, all proceeds come to the Resident Activity Fund, picked up at eleven A.M., or can be delivered for lunch. Uh, eight two five six one eight one, uh, this annual sale they have with that. Uh, this come Wednesday, sixty-five over, they'll have bingo, the community, uh, uh, Saturday, of two to four. That says come in Wednesday from two to four. Under our old business, uh, the closure, Second Avenue started from the corner of Tyler and Second Avenue, and headed south to the railroad track. Now, Mr. Welber, this one, put it in the paper.
That's right.
And we had an open meeting here at five thirty this evening. Uh, we need to do that again, because it was changed from abandonment to, uh, closure.
I think I would say this way to make sure that you are covered.
Okay. So, according to our, uh, town attorney, Mr. Welber, uh, we'll get that back in the paper, and then next month have another, five thirty six, open, open meeting, that will get this finalized. So, way it was written up, and that's my fault, I paid a blank for that, uh, instead of abandoning, it should have been closed, if you know that. So, according to Mr. Welber, that's been a legal way to go with this, and that's just a way to go. Under new, uh, businesses, uh, we have done that, that's, that's just second on that, motion?
I'll make a motion.
In the second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. E, you said donate things behavior, or condition of the hand?
Uh, they're unoptable. No, no function though. It's probably more to repair than it work.
That's what he uses, can we? If they have a train, or can we sell for trash?
Well, we're gonna get, we're gonna get to that, we're rolling over one right now.
Okay.
Uh, under new business, donation of a vehicle to Maryville Fire Department to be used as a training, so, they've already used one of them. The fire chief, uh, Roy, uh, he, uh, asked to do another one, that's for training. After they get through with it, it goes back behind the barn, the yard, and, uh, uh, it's still retained to the town. Uh, I hear a motion on this discussion?
Absolutely.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay.
Now, he's got a question. He's got a question about the. Can we sample after they tear it up?
Well, that's what I'm gonna get to, under number ten here. Under item number two of the new business is a disposal of old vehicles belonging to the town of Maryville. We're in the process of taking the cars out to the director, with approval of the board, to be sold as scrap. Mr. Peter Walker, I've been contacting him, we got a one-ton truck down there, uh, that he'll put on his truck and take his road apart, and, uh, the money to come back to the town in general fund. I don't know, I don't know what that brings, uh, the money, but they're no good down there.
Somebody's down there.
What is it, three cars, four, and then just put a, a Tahoe down there Friday, and the Tahoe's at the barn? Oh, the Durango? Durango, it's in the barn, scrap. Three cars, Durango, and a one-ton truck. Now, I say three cars, is that right? Uh, there's that Impala that they used here a while back, that the fire department used. Right. And there's two Crown V's. Right, three, three cars. All of that, on that Crown V, that white one that's still got all the stuff in it. Who's thinking about it, because I've got a head full of my business. I'll get it on there online, okay.
I think it's.
Get stripped, what you can, all those useful parts, and let the whole just go. Sound good? Any further discussion?
You know, you know, you have a rabble, and.
All right. How about that motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we're ready for public participation. Let's open to the public.
I just want to say one thing, over someplace over around Newton, is you got a Tahoe for them, you pay three hundred dollars for them.
How about it?
Three hundred.
Three? I don't, you know what rigor is? I don't know.
Oh, I thought they were giving about five hundred for, for vehicles, I don't know.
Rigor?
Yeah, for scrap.
Yeah.
Then again, it probably depends on the size of the vehicle, you know, you know, they're scrapping, scrapping.
One piece crap in there.
We just need to make sure that we got any service for tire, dome, or anything that's possibly used, or could down the road be used.
Even the mayor, the chief, I looked for, we're gonna, we're gonna scrap them.
The studies part, you had, had the title, you know, he's got some, he bred a car, and he had that tire, so it's stolen.
Yeah, I, yup, y'all had a pile of stuff, we here, sir?
I had definitely piles, that pile, all the, the tread up there.
You got some of them stolen, cars coming in, to, to win, I had a tire in it.
David, can I make an announcement?
Yes, ma'am.
I wanna make an announcement that Greenup Baptist Church is having a gospel singing, February the twenty first, at six o'clock. His Grace will be the, uh, singers, and there will be, uh, food afterwards.
Thank you for that, I still have that on my list.
I have three, eight, nine, I got three.
Saturday, February the twenty first.
With that white car, Crown Victor? Both of the white ones back there are Crown V's.
His Grace.
The one that's still got the Draper P D markings on it, there's another sound, they're going, they had done stripped it completely, motor and everything. Well, that's same way with that, when they chopped up. They split, switched motor. They swapped the motor, I don't, I, I wish they could have got over there before they started tearing up, because the fenders and stuff on them were still indecent, could have been entertaining, it probably had.
Well, you know, if we can use somewhere low. That's part of the problem here.
Yeah, go up there first.
That goes back to a communication problem, I'll talk to you about that.
I have something. I have something, sir. As far as movie night, it, 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 with this mother, or when it will next month, or, or the next, it, it will, it, it will get kicked back up. Uh, up in the summertime, up in the summer months, and again, I would really like, to know, of, of what kind of family movies, that's good, that, that's good that everybody wants to have. And it is really tough to put it, to, to, to put together a long list of, of family movies, I, I, for that, for that duration. So, so I would, I would, I'd be grateful for any input.
Did you have a thought, Mr. Welber?
I was just, the only thing that I can think of is if we start worrying about, besides scrapping the cars, and taking everything out of it, if public bid law would apply, but, it sounds like we're fine with once, we're looking at the vehicles, and we're not trying to sell them out, and give someone a benefit, so, public bid law shouldn't be a problem, and we're just salvaging what we can from the vehicles, so, that's, that's the only thing that came to mind, we're talking about that.
Probably have to be real careful, make sure that, uh, that radio was took down, that we sent down the road, we put in somebody's private car or something, you know, we, we, we take more of the place in process.
There'll be, uh, stripped, and I'll look at them before they leave the barn.
Just to live, keep track of it.
They done chopped up one, they pick and chop up another, and so, that then we can restore that stuff. Any further, yes?
The Drama Club at the high school is putting on Aladdin Junior on February twenty eighth. They're also gonna be doing the talent show at the same time, and I believe it starts at six o'clock, and it's three dollars a student and six dollars for adults.
And you may get a supplier and put it on bulletin board?
I've got it on the Facebook page, and I'll, I'll see if Miss Maryville will print one up for us.
When is that?
February twenty eighth.
What is it, what is it, that, that's coming up, that, Thursday, that they just said?
Thursday. Oh, no, the elementary Valentine dance.
The Drama Club.
And I need a mama, when we're through, they talk to mama.
You have volunteer?
I was fixing volunteer myself, did you say talent show today?
Yes.
That's scary. Same day?
No, 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 yeah, the talent show, Aladdin Junior, at the same time, same day.
I'll embarrass her, I'll get out there and do some crazy dance. You'll shout out the dance, and she can. No. Come on, it's fun. No. Why I'm not a school teacher. On the twenty eighth, they're also having that, watch for Miss Gilmore. Yeah, I mean, at the, um, it's at the High School Track. Oh, it changed it, it was a little gym. Was it a little gym?
Any color, cover, potential price?
Which one? I'm looking at that right now. It just says, it's February twenty eighth from three to nine, and the way they were talking, it was supposed to be over at the High School Track. What's the last thing I seen last night? It's for, uh, Miss Gilmore. Shirley Gilmore. Yeah, it just said Maryville High School right now. Yeah, I got it on my, my phone.
Any, any other participation, announcements? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank y'all for coming out. Thank y'all for coming out.